Let's call this meeting in order to please stand for the
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Board of Commissioners meeting for November 14th, 2017. We move right to the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes for October 31st, approval of payroll for November 3rd, approval of claims for November 2nd, November 9th, and then we have Memorial Opera House, South Shore Orchestra Artistic Services Agreement, Aaron Breeford Artistic Services Agreement, and Brian Moore Artistic Services Agreement. I will open the floor to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move into the new business now. No, trying to. We have Gareup Construction Payment Application Number One in the amount of $259,236 for the renovation of the Admin Plaza, and as you can see out to the left, to your right, that work is taking place. So, Matt?
Yeah, I'll be representing Structure Point Gareup. Neither of them could attend today for the approval. So if you have any questions, I can take those.
Any questions for the board?
It's turned out really good. We're ahead of schedule. It's really starting to take shape now, so, yeah.
When are you expecting the front doors to be open again?
Somewhere around January 1st, second week, as of now.
All right, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for the payment application number one in the amount of $259,236 for Gareup Construction on the Administration Plaza project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we have approval of a change order, number one, number two, from Gareup Construction for the renovation of the Admin Plaza, and Matt?
Two change orders. One was to some irrigation work. We have sprinklers and irrigation that surround this facility, and we had to do some extra work to re-hook those up, being that the main line came out in front. So the first change order, and forgive me, I don't have the two amounts in front of me. The first change order was for that, hook that back up. The second change order, I requested that we beef up the power and outlets at the front here, should we ever do a statue or a fake Christmas tree. I just really wanted to go the extra mile and pump the power. So regardless of what we plug in, we've got extra circuits, and we're not going to be popping breakers, or we could add as many lights or whatever plug in as much as we want, we'd be safe. So that's where the second change order comes in. That one was in the amount of $1,500, and I believe the irrigation was something like $3,000.
And we have a change order here for $3,713.
That's the irrigation, and the electric is $1,500.
Okay, and then that's the number two. So we have a change order, number one, for $3,715.
Thirteen.
Thirteen dollars for thirty-six?
Thirty-seven thirteen for the first one, and the second one's $1,500.
Correct, the electric.
Any questions from the board?
No, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second to approve change order number one and number two in the amounts of $3,713 and $1,500. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, and these will be on a future payout. Today it was just you guys approving it.
Yep.
Thank you, have a good day.
Yep. Okay, we're going to move to number four. We'll come back to number three on the agenda. This number four is the approval purchase of 911 radios. Everybody knows that we're moving towards an 800-megahertz system within the county. From what I've been hearing, we're looking around a March date to go live on the 800-meg. Obviously, to make the 800-meg work, we need radios. And this is the final culmination of a lot of pricing, a lot of discussions, a lot of meetings with the type of radios that we're going to be using, and how we're going to fund these. So the first portion of the radios that we'll be letting today are the radios that we will be needing for county government itself. That would be the Highway Department, that would be EMA, the sheriff, the jail, process servers, all the people that need to be outfitted with a radio. The price of these radios are also for, there's portable, I always get this right, there's mobile radios that go in the cars, and there's portable radios that you hold with you. This is a combination of both in this pricing. And the first, for just the county radios, and as I described, for all those different departments, we have a dollar amount of $849,447.32. These are EF Johnson radios, which the county has decided to go with. This is, we've had other radios that we looked at. This is a radio that is approved by the state system, so they are an approved product. We also looked at Motorola's, which are the company that provided us the infrastructure, the towers, and everything else. After we looked at all the different radios, and looked at the prices, and looked at the different departments and the needs, we've come up with that the bulk of the county's radios will be going with Bartronics, which is a local provider out of the north part of the county. And we're pretty happy with the pricing, the service. We'll have a local service, we'll have local people involved in this. I think part of the, is this also with the sheriff?
Yes.
Motorola's. And then the sheriff's department, we'll be having for the active-duty members, we will be going to Motorola's for the sheriff's department. So we sort of have a combination of different radios based on different needs. So the first thing that we would like to have approved to the other board members would be just for the county purchases, because this is how the bills will come in, so we want to approve them the same way, so we have a record of matching things up here. So the first, the first dollar amount is $849,447.32. I would also like to let the board know that this has been approved at the council level, and so this is the, the funding has been approved. Now we're just approving the actual purchase, which we have to sign a contract for. So I hope that's as clear as mud for everybody. So with that, entertain a motion for the $849,447.32.
Motion.
We have a motion in second for the purchase of the Porter County radios for various Porter County departments in the amount of $849,447.32. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We can buy radios, get them going. The next on the list, what we also did is various counties, cities, and towns, as we surveyed all of the different political subdivisions that would be involved in our 911 protocol. Some counties had gone ahead and bought some radios, and had bought some dual-band radios. So we basically went out, did a survey of a lot of the different fire departments within the towns and the townships, and some had bought their radios, some had not, some had gotten some federal grants. You know, the federal grants applied to certain rural areas, so other towns couldn't participate in that. There's a lot of rules and regulations that you have to work through on this. At the end of the day, because this was a decision that the county made to move forward on this 800-meg, we had also had a study done by Umba about a year ago that showed us how the funding from the state flowed through to the difficult, to the different entities within county government, and that's townships, cities, and towns. Based off that analysis, it was very clear to us that the townships really didn't have a lot of money that passed through from the state to pay for these things. And if they are fire departments, and they are part of our delivery system for public safety, we felt that it was necessary that we bring everybody up to that level now, the day we go active. So with that, what we did was we've had a lot of separate meetings with a lot of different entities, trying to figure out their needs. We knew as a county, we weren't going to help them out 100%, but we said we would come up with something that we could figure out that would help them to get there, to get these radios purchased. I would also like to make it very clear that the offering of the next dollar amounts that we approve or not approve, or whatever we decide to do here, that this is a one-time, one-time offering from the county to get everybody up to speed. Then at that point in time, everybody else is on their own for their equipment and everything else. We just felt that it was the right thing to do from the county to help some of these other political subdivisions that just do not have the funding mechanisms to get this system up and going. So we're sort of giving them, these entities, a little bit of a push and a little bit of a boost, so everybody's up to speed from day one. Do we want to do these separately, Scott? So the first one would be the South Haven Fire Department, which had a total price of $165,789. And this, what we have decided to do as a county, in looking at the funding, is these next four entities that will be coming through here, the county will be stepping up and doing a 70% match. So we'll be paying 70% where that entity will have to come up with 30%, okay? So with South Haven, what the commissioners would need to act on is $116,052.58.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for South Haven Fire Department. Again, these are EF Johnson radios, so we use the EF Johnson pricing for these radios at $116,052.58. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. South Haven is good. Next one is Washington Township Fire Department. Their basic needs for their cost, again EF Johnson radios, local, $52,663.50. So if you take that 70% formula, the county will be buying, will be, don't, not, we will be matching, $36,864.45, and that is for Washington Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in second for Washington Township Fire Department, match of $36,864.45. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next one, the next, the last two are for the Couch Police Department and the Hebron Police Department. The Couch was, they're 100% ask for their radios, again EF Johnson, was $37,473.40. The 70% match would be $26,231.38.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for radio funding for Couch Fire Department of 26, Police Department, Couch Police Department of 26, 231.38. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Again, the Couch Fire Department got their radios through their federal grant when we approved that about two months ago. The Police Department was not involved in that.
And we approved the match.
And we approved the match for the Fire Department, too. So, and the last one is the Hebron Fire Department, Hebron Police Department, $54,172.50 is their total ask for their EF Johnson radios. Our 70% contribution is $37,920.75, and that would be the amount for the county's match for the Hebron Police Department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in second for the Hebron Police Department, funding of county match of radios of $37,920.75. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I keep wanting to say the total.
The total that the county will be spending on all these radios is $1,066,516.38.
Those are approved ones.
Those are all would have been approved up until the state. We also had the Porter County ambulances, which we had to pay for too, but we actually had a separate fund that we were able to pay for out of that that went towards that. This is, just so everybody knows, this has taken a lot of time, a lot of effort. I can't even begin to tell you how much time was gone through this to get to this. The good part of it is, is when we sat here a year ago, and we talked about moving forward on the total 800-megahertz system, we were looking at numbers right around $8, $9 million for all of this implementation. By us working with the different radio and the different people, working with Bartronics locally, working with the state, working with Motorola, we really, and I'll give Bartronics a lot of, just thank them for the work that they've done on this. We saw some significant savings by working these out between these two entities. So if you take the infrastructure piece, which was right around $5 million, and you take the radio of over $1 million, and through federal grants and through other things by working creatively, we've pretty much now at around 6, 6.3 million, where we were looking at around 9 million at the end of last year. So I just want to thank everybody that was involved in this. I think we have very top-notch equipment, but we were able to work it, and we were able to price it, and it took a lot of work, but I think we're seeing the savings and the other things that were in it. And I think, based on the recent article that was in the paper about lack of funding for 911, and all the things that other counties in the state are dealing with, this is a good start to where we're going with this. So I just want to thank this board and all, Mike and Mike Brechner and a lot of other people, the different fire departments, police departments that were involved in this. But as of today, we're moving forward with 100% everything now. So now we just got to get a bunch of radios installed, right? So thank you to everybody. The next on the agenda is the approval of appropriation of hospital principal in the amount of $1.2 million for 911 800-megahertz radios. So yes, it's true, we are taking this money out of hospital principal, and we are using, this takes a 10-0 vote to do that. The council has already voted, is that, yeah, the council has already voted, we had a 7-0 there, we're here to complete that. We couldn't think of anything better to spend hospital principal money on getting our 911 system up to speed. So we hold that money, it's coveted, but we felt that this was the right thing to do in this situation, because it affects everybody in the county. And that's how we're sort of looking at this. So I'll open up the floor, if any of the commissioners want to add anything else to that.
I just have a question for Mike or Mr. Resto. I read, since Lepore County has activated their 800-meg radios, the system, some residents started complaining who historically or traditionally sit in their homes and listen to the scanners, police scanners or fire scanners, and they can't, for whatever reason, pick up the calls now. Is that a problem we're going to have as well?
Well, it could be, because Lepore County has a five-channel simulcast system, which means all towers transmit at the same time. And what you have when they transmit at the same time is you actually have signal overlaps because of, you know, they calculate what the coverage is for each tower, but there will be signal overlap, and that's what's happening in downtown Lepore. They're getting signal overlap, and there's some slight misadjustment of the simulcast system down there. Motorola needs to tweak it a little bit to get everything in phase. With that simulcast system, not only do the frequencies have to just be within parts per million, the audio levels, the phase of the audio, and all the other signal data that goes along with the trunking system all has to be totally in phase, and if it's not, then you get dark areas where lesser expensive radios like scanners can't hear the signals well, although the EF Johnson or Moto radios with better receivers and stuff do decipher that, but.
So what's the short answer, Bruce?
The short answer is Motorola needs to adjust their system.
Okay.
Well, I did look into that.
Thank you.
And it is, we're not going to have any issues here in Lepore County after we spoke with the towers that we have, what it is, what I've heard, and it's a standard that if somebody buys a scanner, it's not a time limit, it's not a pay-up privilege. So it's up to the public to see if they want to invest in the right type of scanner to now be able to pick up traffic. We aren't going to have any issues like that in Porter County. It's not an infrastructure issue, it's not a radio issue for us, it's a scanner issue for the consumer. And there's some frustration because they have lots of scanners, and now they don't work, so that's how that came out, but we're good to go here as long as, we, you know, we can let the public know if they want to invest in a little bit more expensive scanner than they'll pick up traffic.
Yeah, I mean, it seems reasonable that that was, that would occur, I mean, since we're updating the equipment, the technology's all different, that.
I've been used to some decent scanners in Lepore County, but there's still some, there's an issue right downtown Lepore. Anywhere, if you take the scanner anywhere around Lepore County, it works, except downtown Lepore, for some reason, you know, it's got to be based on signal overlap and stuff.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did we do, did we open up, did we do the motion?
You haven't done that motion. Yes, we have, we're back to approval of appropriations for the hospital principal of 1.2.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second on the approval appropriations of hospital principal in the amount of $1.2 million for 911 800-megahertz radios. The council has approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we can really go buy radios. Um, no, 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 okay. Next on the agenda is construction management contract for capital improvement plan. Scott, you want to?
Yes, we, the Commissioner's office, we're dealing with some different vendors for this service contract, the construction management. We had several proposals. The proposal, I believe, the commissioners are wanting to undertake today would be the one from Skilman Corporation to be the construction management service provider for the capital improvement project for the $30 million bond. Had several meetings on this project. What I would request is that we approve the proposal of Skilman contingent upon my review of the AIA contract, probably at the December meeting. We have the i's dotted and the t's crossed, and get our scope finalized, and I think we'll be able to put that in the AIA, but we can get underway at this point. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the construction management contract for the capital improvement plan for Skilman Corporation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. This is the first movement towards implementing our capital improvement plan. In order, prior to bringing any architects or any design professionals on board, we needed to have a project administrator, construction manager on board first. They're going to help us negotiate our contracts with the architects to make sure we don't have duplication of services and other things in this thing. We're moving through this methodically. We have a lot of construction to do, but there's a lot of work in the pre-planning. Where we'll save money in this project is if we plan it correctly. So we're taking the time to plan this thing correctly, and we think that there'll be savings on the other end. And we'll have better, we'll have better buildings in the end, too. We'll have buildings that will actually fit the needs of what we need. So bear with us. When we took the capital plan through all the different public meetings, it was always discussed that we had not started any design or any, anything, we had not started anything until we had the approval of the council to move forward on this bond. Now that we have the approval, we are starting to work through that. We probably won't be seeing a lot of construction starting till probably summer or thereafter. So I know we're getting a lot of, I know this is going out here, but we decided to pull the trigger on that and move forward on that early because it was less than $1 million, and we had the funds in there to do that no matter what. But I know we've been having some people talking about when you're getting started, what are you going to do? It's coming, but when you build this much in buildings, and you do this much in construction, you don't want to turn this thing into a race. We got to do this right, because these are government buildings, and we're going to be living with these for a long time. So a little bit of extra time on the front end, I think is going to give us a lot of extra good on the back end, so.
No pun intended.
Yeah, so stay tuned. We'll be updating you as we go through this project, but I know there's been some calls and some things over the last couple of weeks, and we're just trying to get everybody set up to know what's in the lane we're in and how we're going. So that's, that's our latest update.
And nobody wants to get these started quicker than, than we do, but as Commissioner Good pointed out, these are the decisions we make now, we're going to have to live with for the next 50 or 60 years, so we're just going to, you know, take a responsible amount of time before we, we make those decisions, and we'll move on. It'll be, it'll be, we'll be talking about it soon enough.
Yeah.
About cut ribbons, so.
The other thing we're going to be doing, too, is there's a whole budget process here that goes along with building, you know, that goes along with this money. So one of the things is we've talked with Skilman about, and that we're working through as we take this through the meat grinder, we're going to be periodically going back to the council and updating them on what's going on, where we're at in the process. So we're trying to leave no man behind here on this thing. So when you, you build buildings by a village, you need to bring the village along, and that's what we're going to try to do here. So that's going to take a little extra time, too, but we think in the end, it's going to be worth it. So Laura, do you want to add anything, or?
No, I agree. I mean, that's what we did with the animal shelter, and it worked out well.
Yep. We're sticking to our plan, so. Next on the agenda is the amendment to the rainy day fund. Scott, why don't you sort of give everybody the reason why we're amending this and the purpose?
The purpose is the Porter County Election Board has done some bidding. They are indicating that they are in need of new election equipment. That election equipment, at this point, has a price tag of approximately $1,835,000. We are in a situation where the election board's general fund budget has approximately $446,000 within it that would not be spent this year, and that was specifically budgeted within the election board's budget for the purchase of this equipment. We are unsure if we're going to be able to make that purchase before the end of the year, and therefore, we want to be able to segregate this money and protect it moving into next year as the beginning nest egg towards this purchase. I have worked with the auditor, Mr. Bannick, and she has figured out a way that we would be able to do this, that would keep the State Board of Accounts happy, and allow us to meet this goal. So in doing this, we would be amending our rainy day ordinance to allow for us to have a specific purpose of putting this money within the rainy day fund for this specific, for this, excuse me, for this specific expenditure. And then we'll follow it up with some movement at the council for whatever action the council needs to take to make this happen. The general plan would be, again, around 1.8, 1.9 million is the total expenditure. This would allow us to protect up to about $446,000. That number will be a slightly moving target as we get closer into December to see what exactly has not been spent, but the plan is to then segregate this over to the rainy day fund, and then in 2018, as our. day fund. And then in 2018, as our finances and, uh, we get additional information, how our foundation's done, how the general fund's running, et cetera, et cetera, um, be able to potentially put this together with a purchase, uh, maybe in 18, uh, looking towards the 19 election. That's all very preliminary. What we're attempting to do now is simply segregate this money, uh, so that we have it as this, as these discussions continue, so that we are improving our position as to, um, having the money necessary to purchase the equipment. So this would be first reading on the amendment to the rainy day fund. The only thing this amendment is doing is specifically allowing us to segregate this money into the rainy day fund from the general fund and, um, have it there going into 2018 as these discussions continue.
And if we didn't do that, what would happen at the first of the year is this money would revert back to the general fund. And then it's a whole nother situation approvals and processes there. So we're basically, we're just basically setting the money aside in an account that's protected, that when we figure out what we're going to do here, we have part of that money there as part of the fix of how we're going to go forward. Then by no means does this mean that we're going to go out and buy $1.8 million worth of voting equipment tomorrow. That's not what this is about. This is, this, this is another department in county government that's got to get in line and figure out what we're going to do. We, we have, you know, we have about $4 million worth of equipment we need to buy in 911. Uh, we have, we have about a million dollars worth of equipment that we need to buy to upgrade our IT. Uh, now we have 1.8 for new voting equipment. We have to figure this out. We have to get everybody in line. Everybody's going to have to be patient till we figure out how we can make this work within the means that we have right now. And that's what we're going to do. So this is the first step. Yeah. And, and I'd also like to point out that this discussion has been back and forth with the council. So they're very aware of our actions today and what we're doing. Uh, we're trying to get there together. Uh, and as you can imagine in voting registration, that's always hard to do. Uh, but we're, we're making that effort and putting it forward. So we're, we're all putting our political swords down and, and we're all trying to figure out how we can move the county forward, uh, in, in, in a really good way, in a, in a transparent way. So, uh, that's the first reading. So what we'll do is I'll suspend the commissioners' meeting. We'll open up a public meeting. And with that, what I'd like to do is, uh, give anyone in the audience, uh, first call, the opportunity to come up and speak for this ordinance, this amendment. I'm so used to doing ordinances, this is an amendment. We have a second opportunity for anybody to come forward to speak in behalf of, for this amendment. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward and speaking in favor of this amendment. We will now turn and move to anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this amendment. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this amendment. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward and speaking against this amendment. Public hearing is now closed. I'll open it up to the floor for the board to do as they wish.
Motion to approve the amendment to the rainy day fund on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and second for amendment to the rainy day fund for first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we'll be doing the second reading, uh, on the December 12th commissioners' meeting, and that's when the amendment will be in full effect. Um, next on the agenda, we have KBIC. Uh, KBIC is, uh, the Porter County's consultant, uh, that has been helping us, uh, trying to figure out our, uh, property and casualty insurance for the county. Uh, and this is regarding the broker selection process recommendations. Charlie, how you doing today?
Doing great. How about yourself?
Good.
Go ahead and give you guys just a formal copy of our recommendation. Probably just cover the first tab there where I summarize our recommendations. So, um, yeah, just to, just to refresh people, uh, KBIC was engaged in September to assist with a, uh, broker selection process for the property casualty insurance for Porter County. Um, there in the first tab, uh, is my formal recommendation. I'll just spend about five, 10 minutes covering our, our process and then kind of open up questions, uh, on our recommendations. So, um, the major goals in our broker selection process were basically to identify an agent and broker with proper experience and the capabilities to sufficiently advise and service the, uh, the county. Um, we feel that, um, the best way to develop such a relationship is to create a transparent environment, um, with the broker and the, the client or the county. Um, this is traditionally done by, by implementing two things. One, changing the traditional, uh, insurance compensation model from commission to fee only. So we've asked, we asked all participants and, um, our final recommended partner to, just to, what they'll do is they'll quote all insurance policies net of commission. There'll be no, you know, commission involved there. And then they've given us a flat fee, um, that they'll charge annually to the county. Um, we just find that creates no conflict of interest, a much more, um, transparent, um, environment. People, people tend to just have a better working relationship if they know how much money they're paying a person to do, um, that job. Um, you know, in the instance, in any cases where, uh, it's maybe not possible or not feasible to, um, uh, to quote policies net of commission, they'll, they'll disclose such. Um, so, um, and then also a part of that, you can turn to the second tab, is just the scope of services. Just, so just clearly outlining what, uh, that agent partner has indicated that they'll do throughout that year. So I don't think there's anything radical, uh, within that, um, but, uh, our recommended partner really has, uh, agreed to comply with, you know, all of our recommended scope of services, including, you know, all annual reviews, um, notifications, marketing of policies, et cetera. Um, so just a little bit about the process and how we go about, you know, selecting our recommended partner is, um, it really goes through a couple of different phases. The first is just introductory. Um, during the introductory phase, we basically, um, identified the needs and preferences of the counties by, um, doing a survey for, for not only, um, the commissioners, but prior to that, we'd also done a, um, survey of all the department heads. Um, had asked for recommendations for any, um, agents i- in the area that, uh, that wanted included in the process. And then as well as we, we, we do, um, you know, research on which agencies throughout the Indiana market have particular governmental experience. Uh, we contact those, those agents, give them a brief introduction into the scope of the, scope of the, um, project. Um, and then it kind of goes through a series of, um, call it vetting, uh, of that, that partner. So the first is just really an introductory, um, give us the basic information about yourself, your agency, et cetera. Uh, during the second phase, um, we ask, or we release more information as well as that scope of services to, of all the participants, um, and ask them to actually, you know, agree to, agree to the scope of services, suggest any additional services that they either have or that they feel is relevant to the, um, county's particular insurance situation, and then as well as provide a, a proposed fee. Um, and then based off of those answers, we go to the interview phase. Uh, so we conducted interviews with, um, uh, about five participants. And just to kind of back up to give you an idea of the number of participants, I think, you know, during the introductory phase, we contacted about 13 to 15 different agents, introduced that, um, introduced the, uh, project to them. Some just for whatever reason declined to participate. Um, in the first phase where we actually got information, we did get back submissions from 10. Of all of those 10, just due to their qualifications, were chosen or just allowed to participate in the second, second phase. Um, then it kind of came down, we got eight submissions in that second phase, and then finally chose five for the interview process. Um, so, um, based off of really the, the submissions provided in phase, phase two, and ultimately our interview process, we're making a recommendation that, um, the county select general insurance services as their, um, primary agent of record. There'll be two primary agents handling the, handling the account, Mark Barant and Charlie Keen. Uh, Mark has, is out of their Val Brays office here, um, and is a resident of Chesterton. Um, our recommendations are always supported by a couple of key reasons or a few key reasons. A, service and locality. Um, kind of going through this process, um, this is a, a very good first step for the county in, I think, um, kind of harvesting some value out of their insurance program. I think there's a lot of opportunity, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And, you know, when meeting with, um, agents from different localities, particularly the Indianapolis area, just felt like it was going to be very difficult for them to get that hands-on experience and really be involved in, in the, you know, insurance risk management practices of the county. Um, but, um, particularly General Insurance Service and other municipality or governmental entities that they work with, um, up, up in the northern Indiana, um, they had really done everything that we're looking to implement over the next, uh, over the next hopefully year. Um, so that spoke very well. Um, just in the first, just in the, uh, first folder here, first, um, there, there's a brief general insurance, general services, general insurance services at a glance. Uh, you know, during their interview process, they mentioned that their, um, their mission statement was to secure the future of the communities we serve. And really that kind of, that notion really resonated throughout their entire presentation, that they really had a hometown sense of pride and they really wanted to, you know, service the, the counties which, which they and their employees work in. Um, so I think, um, service locality on top of experience, uh, General Insurance Services, they're not the, the national or, you know, super regional brokers, um, but certainly they're, they've got 65 employees, they're best practices, um, agency, which is just basically recognized within the insurance industry as, as, um, a, a top-notch agency. Um, so I, I think they've got the capabilities to provide all the services and the insurance programs that the county needs. And then on top of that, their proposed fee was, um, significantly less than what, um, other agencies had, had proposed. So, um, I think, you know, that, uh, I'm sure that they'll have a great working relationship with the county. Also, just this movement from a commission model to a fee-only model should, uh, that alone should save $75,000 or plus or more, um, this first renewal season. So, um, and I think that, um, you know, give it time to market the account, that there'll be additional savings available as well as the, as well as the, uh, risk management, uh, practices that they can help us with. So, so that, that is our recommendation. Um, just open up to questions, uh, if you guys have anything.
Yeah, if I under-
Go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim. So if I understand correctly, that, uh, the, uh, the agent broker, um, when they bring policies or programs to us, um, they will not or cannot receive compensation from, from those, um, programs which are recommending us to adopt or contract with.
Correct. I mean, no, no direct commission. Um, you know, in the insurance world, there's always what they call contingencies, which are not direct commission. Those are a little bit difficult or, or, those are more difficult to exclude. You really can't. Um, but as far as direct policy commission, no. And in the event that there was a situation where they just couldn't, uh, quote it net of commission, um, just due to some, some carriers won't quote net of commission. It's just not in their systems to do that. In the event that they do, that they would disclose that fee. So, but I don't, I don't anticipate that being in, in issues. So, but, um, but yeah, they're.
Well, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a deal breaker for me.
As far as.
That has to, that has to be, that has to be made crystal clear in our contract.
No, definitely. They, they will disclose all, it is actually in the contract that, uh, Attorney McClure has reviewed. So they, they will absolutely disclose and it's amendment to the contract.
Yeah, again, I would like to just, for the record, this, this is a big movement for the county here. I mean, we've been on commission-based property casualty insurance for a long time. And to go to just a direct fee base with no other revenue source, uh, is, is the most transparent way that you can do this. And, uh, I definitely feel that this is the right move for us right now. Um, I think, um, so the commission base versus, versus the, the, the solid fee is, is a big step, uh, for the county. I think the other thing is when we were, you were going through the scoring, you were updating us on the scores of the different firms. Um, what I took out of it is that GIS, uh, ranked right up there with a lot of the larger firms in Indianapolis. And so for us, we were looking for that service component. Why local? Um, we have a lot of work to do on our property and casualty. We have a tremendous amount of work to do in workman's comp and auto insurance. And through that, we're putting a, we're convening a board, uh, that will be, do nothing but talk about these specific areas. So it's, insurance is like anything else. In order to get it down, you got to make your chart and your health record look better than what it is. And that's the, and you're always working in arrears. You're always a year behind. You're always two years behind. We have to, we have to work and we have to have all hands on deck with different departments, which is basically highway, police, what we're, uh, where we have a lot of slips and falls, workman comp issues, automobile, uh, issues. We're going to be convening as a group. And that's why that local participation is very important to us, that we have someone in the insurance business locally helping us drive these discussions and driving these solutions that can help drive our property and casualty insurance down. So we think we've cast a pretty broad net here. And I think that, uh, you know, I know from, from reading the recommendations and everything earlier on before this meeting, I'm very pleased with the outcome. So, um, but again, commission-based versus fee-based, that's a big deal for us right here. That, that is a big movement. That's a big pivot for us. And I'm, I'm, I'm excited to be heading down this road. So.
Yeah, just to, just to dovetail, I mean, uh, General Insurance Services, Charlie and, and Mark had both agreed to be present in all of those committee.
Yep.
Uh, committee meetings. So that, you know, for an Indianapolis, um, broker or someone outside of, you know, the area, it's difficult to, to do. So, uh, I'm, I'm confident that we'll have a great relationship with them.
Yep.
So.
We're looking forward to it. So.
So ultimately, your recommendation after the process was for, uh, GIS? And I, I have reviewed the contract and it's a flat fee, I believe, of $50,000. Is that correct?
Yeah. And that would be for, you know, essentially today or tomorrow through January 1st of 2019. So.
No auto renewals. There are a couple of options for us to renew it, uh, for two more years, uh, following. So.
Yes, correct. So.
Contract's in good order. So the commissioners, it's on the floor for you.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve, um, General Insurance Services. I'm also really excited about fee-based. It sure makes it a lot more simple when you're comparing bids and companies and, um, it's apples to apples very clearly. And I appreciate that.
And I'll second it with, with this is that historically, and I think Commissioner Good touched on it, historically, at least here in the last few years, uh, this is taking this in an absolute different direction to where it's been. And, and there is no doubt that at the end of the day, that county government is going to be better off for it and the taxpayers are going to be better off for it. Because that is not what has been happening up here, uh, over the last few years. And, and as a, as a result, we haven't always gotten the best programs, in my opinion, at the best prices. And there was, there was compensation going on there that, that this board was not, uh, the full board was not fully aware of, which in my opinion is woefully wrong.
So.
Did you second?
I second, he seconded with that caveat. Uh, we have a motion and second to approve GIS insurance, uh, for the fee-based, uh, executor of the county insurances, uh, the county's property and casualty insurance program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Are they here?
Okay. We're going to move back to the agenda here with, uh, the county, and while we're on insurance, we'll move over to the health insurance. And we'll give you an update as to what we got going on there. Uh, and we're going to let our attorney, Scott McClure, lead us off. So the, uh, the commissioners have a, have R.E. Sutton as the consultant working on our county health insurance. They've been involved since roughly about this time last year. Um, and we kept them on. And we've had a, the commissioners had a meeting with them in the last couple of weeks. We are putting the process together, uh, again, to put out requests for proposals, uh, for our, uh, insurance. So in, in layman's terms, that will be going back out to.
So in layman's terms, that will be going back out to the market and looking at the proposals from all the different possible carriers out there to look at our overall county health insurance program. And that, that has a renewal date in the April-May range. So those RFPs will be going out pretty quickly. And then we'll be looking at those in the early spring. So this is just announcing that that is occurring. That process is underway. That process is going to look a lot like the one we just went through with KVIC as far as getting requests for proposals and having RE Sutton run that, run that, excuse me, run that RFP process for us. So we'll be looking forward to those updates probably in January and February of how that process is going.
Yeah, and just to add on, just to add on to what Scott, on that update, as we're looking through the RFP process and we're trying to figure out how we're gonna go out to the market, there's also been some discussions in the commissioner's office about how we're gonna implement the health insurance. And who's going to implement the health insurance? So as we're working towards finding the right company and the right product for our county employees, we're also, in the same breath, trying to figure out is how we're going to process all this work? Who's gonna be the point person? How is this information gonna flow from the employees to us in government? So we, we're working a dual track here. We're trying to figure out best product, but we're also trying to figure out is once we get that product in place, how are we going to operate that program within county government? And we're trying to figure out how we can do it without another consultant. So that's what we're working on. That's a little add-on to what we're talking about. But again, a lot of insurance meetings lately, so. And I don't think we need to, do we need to vote on them for the RFP?
We just wanted to announce that they'll be going out.
Yeah, so it's, just wanted to give you an update that we're moving forward on that. So that's, that on that. Next on the agenda is Expo Center, Lori Daly. This is for a request for an additional appropriation from Fund 4005 in the amount of $10,000 to account 3340 advertising. The additional is to replenish the funds transferred out of advertising at the last meeting to cover the cost of replacement of sound equipment. Hi Lori, good morning.
Hi, good morning. I need, all those advertising dollars are earmarked for the rest of the year. So unfortunately, we need an additional to cover that cost of the sound equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve an additional request in the amount of $10,000 to account 3340 advertising. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori. Next up, 911 EMA, Mike Brickner, Public Safety Director. Please come forward. We got a couple of things to go over with you. Morning, Mike.
Morning.
First on the agenda, we have 911 policy. And what, let's see what we got. I keep bringing up the wrong thing here. There it is. Okay, so what, the first thing on the agenda, Mike, why don't you give us an update? I think it's the bidding, the shift bidding and-
The policy, this is a process that we've discussed. I believe that, you know, as we move forward with rewriting our entire policies for 911, which we're currently getting into, this is really the first of many. This is a policy that I bring to the board for approval, which I think is an appropriate forum as we, you know, as we look towards rewriting the policies, accreditation. And this is a policy that refers to bidding for shifts that has been rewritten to, I think appropriately mirror more of the poorer county, what poorer county handbook says. And I think to solidify how this is a properly, this process is done properly. So this is like number one. I think that will be many as, as we continue to work towards this to bring to the commissioners.
And this, you have discussed this with the dispatchers and everybody out there. I know in our update meetings, you'd said you've been, you know, bringing the whole room along. And so they're, they are aware of this. So do we need to take action on this? So I'll open up the floor to the commissioners. I've reviewed it. I think it's a great idea, so.
Yeah, I agree. Motion to approve 911 policy.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the 911 policy for shift bidding and assignments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Mike, you have an introduction too, don't you?
I do. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Rob Lanchford, who had his first day yesterday as our 911 Deputy Director. And Rob, you can just stand for a minute so we can get a chance to see you. Rob has retired from South Bend Police Department. And I had the opportunity to introduce our EMA Director about a month ago. And now Rob is another big piece of this process. And I'm very excited to have him come aboard.
Welcome. And we're very excited too. So you got a lot of work ahead of you, but I like the team we've put together. So I'm, I'm excited.
We've even looked, looked past that you graduated from Notre Dame. We're willing to set that.
Thank you, Mike.
Very good hire.
Welcome. Thank you.
With that said, we're gonna move into award for vehicle quotes. I think last meeting, we moved some money around, found some money. Just so everybody knows, the condition of these automobiles that we're replacing was terrible. That's all I'm gonna say. This is very well needed. These, and, and we need to have our, our folks in, in better equipment here. And this is what this is for. So what, what Mike had done is how we do everything. We went out, we get three quotes. Even though there are some state numbers out there, there's still some room to work within these quotes. On the board, you see the three quotes? We're actually getting a little bit better at putting the numbers on the board because sometimes we forget to mention them. As you can see of the three, there's three explorers and one expedition. The expedition is for the hazmat because they have a lot more stuff to go in than the other three are just interceptors for 911 EMA. And then the recommendation for accepting the lowest quote is Currie Ford in the amount of $26,125.46 for the explorers and a base price of $41,056.92 for the expedition.
Motion to approve Currie Ford.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Currie Ford in the amount of $26,125.46 for an interceptor and $41,056.92 for an expedition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Looking forward to all the work coming forward.
We are too.
Yep, thank you. Highway Department, Andy McKay. Andy's gonna, we're gonna receive and open the bids for the 2018 supplies. Morning. How you doing?
Good. Yeah, we gotta have, the bids are for limestone, slag, pavement striping, equipment rental, signs opposed, calcium chloride, diesel fuel and culvers. Exciting stuff.
And then we'll do asphalt in spring, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Four bids for limestone.
After you open them, I'm gonna have Rich take them down to your guys' office and they'll put them out so all the vendors can compare prices.
We got limestone for US aggregates. I gotta read all these? No. Thank you.
I see the stone in that, it's different pricing.
Yeah, so, and they'll be on file.
Yeah. And then vendors copies whenever they want them.
So we have US aggregates, we have Ralston Paving, which is local, this is with Ralston. We have Harry Brown Trucking out of Hebron. South Lake Stone out of Hebron. And then there's the folder that it all goes in.
Slag, we have two bids for slag.
This is Bean Stabor, is that right? Bean Stabor aggregates out of Hammond. And Phoenix Services out of Portage.
Cavement striping is next one bid for that?
Always wanna clear a room out. This is how you do it.
Oh, yeah.
I need you to come to a couple of meetings. This is for striping. And this is the air marking company out of Rochester, Indiana.
Equipment rental, four bids.
Equipment rental, we have GE Marshall out of Alperezo. We have Reece Riley. Can we use these for stormwater as well? We can, right? Okay.
Yeah, we, we use them and send us up to invoice.
Okay, thank you. And the last one is Mount Carmel Stabilization Group.
Signs and posts, three bids.
Signs and posts, wow. We're bidding it all out.
Yeah.
Signs and posts.
And probably after, first you gotta do a bunch of quotes then for shop supplies.
Okay. Custom Products Corporation. That's custom too. So this is all custom. Custom Products, Hall Signs out of Bloomington, Indiana. Stello Products out of Spencer, Indiana.
Calcium chloride, one bid.
Liquid salt.
Sorry. Or liquid rust.
Liquid rust. Yeah. Breakway's Chloride out of Warsaw.
Diesel fuel.
Triple J Mar Petroleum out of Wanataw. Al Warren Oil Company out of Hammond. Is that, I think this piece is with-
No, it came out of that.
That's, that's that Al Warren package.
Those are two separate envelopes.
Well, did they give us two quotes then?
I don't know.
It's the same guy, the same. All right, here you go, Andy.
Oh, yeah, one more.
Culverts and guardrails, four bids.
This is James H. Drew Corporation out of Indianapolis. Galvanized steel guardrail. Saint Regis Culverts out of Indianapolis. Corrugated pipe, structural plate, aluminum boxes, bullet liners, geotextiles, detention Metal culverts out of Missouri, Jefferson City, Missouri. There's Debco Metal Culverts. And they're out of Francisville, Debco's out of Francisville, Indiana. Is that it?
That's it. And then Rich is gonna take them down to your guys' office and vendors can-
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Next, I had a transfer.
Did I really? Okay, now we're gonna move into a transfer of funds, Fund 1176 in the amount of $12,000 from account 2210 Fuel and Oil to account 2220 Uniforms and Clothing. This is for the annual clothing allotments.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for transfer of funds for Fund 1176 in the amount of $12,000 from account 2210 to account 2220. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Quotes for 35-ton lowboy trailer. I think it was last, two weeks ago, the lowboy trailer for the Highway Department broke. Died or broke or snapped. So we've told Andy to go out and get some bids for this piece of equipment. And the numbers are in front of you. The recommendation is to accept the lowest bid from West Side Tractor in the amount of $45,600.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Have a motion and, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. We are going to take a five-minute break here before we move into development and stormwater. We'll be right back with you in five. So we'll reconvene at 11:20. Thank you.
Thank you.